Okay, everyone. Welcome. Really happy to see everyone joining the call today. This call is gonna be about fifty-five minutes long. So we're gonna go ahead and get started, so we have time to hear from our speakers. My name is Celine. I am here with the US Campaign for Palestinian Rights. We want to welcome you all to our webinar. Thank you all so much for joining. And we wanna, this is our webinar kicking off our divestment Stop Arming Israel series, where we're orienting you all as our supporter network towards key long-term tactics and strategies to organize to end weapons to Israel using all the different tactics that we can. Today, we're gonna be talking about a few key targets that we have and really focus on underexplored modes of divestment through two case studies that we're gonna focus on from Cleveland and Houston, and then we're gonna close out with sharing some resources. I just wanna start us off with like a little bit of a grounding of the moment that we're in and what has happened this past week. We've seen really horrific scenes from the vicinity of Al Aqsa Martyrs Hospital in Deir el-Balah. And within the past few days where Zionist occupation dropped massively destructive bombs on displacement tents. And witnesses at the scene recorded footage of Palestinians being burned alive in front of them and were unable to aid those who were burned alive in the impacted tents. And what we know for sure is that the two-ton bombs that Israel has used for over a year and that it is using to continue to carry out its genocide in Gaza are made in the US, in Canada and the UK. They are transported to Gaza by the shipping giant Maersk. They have the seal of approval from the American, Canadian, and British governments. And history will record the genocide of Gaza as one that was facilitated by the Western powers through their official channels. So we're saying these, our governments are not just complicit. This is direct responsibility for mass murder, for genocide. And it's not, we're not even thinking just about the politicians. This lies in the hands of the media corporations that are manufacturing consent for genocide. This lies in the hands of every elected official in the belly of the beast, you know, here in the US, who are continuing to support and write blank checks to this genocide. After three hundred and seventy-five days of Israel's nonstop slaughter using US weapons, the Biden administration waited until twenty-one days before the election to claim that they will hold an arms embargo, but what we're saying is Gaza cannot wait another day, and we want an arms embargo right now. We've also seen, just in less than three weeks, two storms, Hurricane Helene and Hurricane Milton devastated the southeast region of the US. And those storms caused tens of billions of dollars in damage to communities, leaving a lot of people in the US stranded without a government-funded and facilitated method to evacuate. So I think it's clear to us that what the US government is continuing to prioritize. And it's clear also where the masses of people stand. It's been clear in the mobilizations we've seen in the past year. People don't want their taxes to be sent to fund a genocide. They want their taxes to be diverted to projects and efforts in their own communities. We're hearing this from North Carolina to Florida. A lot of people in the US are reiterating their more pressing, the most pressing demand is to divest from death and destruction abroad and reinvest in their communities at home. So today, we're gonna be focusing our discussion on how we can set ourselves up for these long-term campaigns to win divestment through, you know, sustained pressure of politicians, of key targets that we can organize across our movement. And we know that city council divestment is about moving money, but it's also about forcing the global economy in the direction of inevitable justice for the Palestinian people. It's about shifting public opinion. It's about setting ourselves up for the long-term struggle, you know, that it's going to take for, to, you know, achieve a liberated Palestine. And so today, we're gonna be hearing from two organizers, Noel from Cleveland, Nish from Houston, about how they are creatively advancing divestment from genocide, how they're pivoting their campaigns, how they're making those assessments, and how they're building bases in their locales to stop arming Israel. And I think just one more point before I pass it on is it's important to understand that what we're talking about is not something that we will see results from immediately. It's about long-term strategy and long-term campaigning. So if we recall the Violia BDS campaign, this campaign lasted over a decade. It began in the early 2000s. It reached its significant successes in the mid, you know, 2010s. And the campaign targeted Violia's involvement in Israeli settlements and human rights violations in Palestine. And by 2015, Violia had completely withdrawn from its operations in the West Bank and including selling its bus lines, its water processing plants, and at least five percent of its stake and the last, sorry, the last five percent of its stake in the Jerusalem light rail. So what we learned from this victory was it's a result of coordinated efforts. It was able to connect anti-labor practices and environmental impact with the company's involvement in Zionist human rights violations. And it's really important to also understand that these approaches for successful campaigns require sustained pressure and organizing efforts that sometimes last several years for us to achieve divestment outcomes. So I just want to say this because I know that so many of us might feel demoralized or feel like what we're doing isn't working, but I think what we've seen is that actually, a lot of our work has been able to achieve concrete gains. We've seen divestment in multiple cities. We've seen the fact that the image of Zionism and understanding and an exposure of what Zionism and US imperialism truly is. We've seen that over the past year through what people have been saying in the streets and their campaigns at their city councils. The demands are clear. I think the mask has come off. And I think for us, it's really important to learn and study from, you know, our history of our movement, but also like what is working and what is not working right now, so that we can learn from those experiences to build stronger campaigns. And that's the goal of our webinar series here, is for us to be able to talk to each other and learn from each other's campaigns. I wanna pass it to Mohammed to talk about a rare political opening that we have right now for us to take action on immediately. So I'm gonna pass it over to Mohammed before we get into the case studies.
Thank you, Tony. And yes, thank you for everybody here. You know, right now it's a very difficult moment. You know, the bombing of the hospital that happened over the last, over the last few days. I thoroughly sense the shock. It's a lot of us working on this issue. But right now, there's a rare political moment that I believe we all should be focusing on, which is called a joint resolution for disapproval, which I've been introduced by Senator Sanders, but two of his other colleagues, Welsh and Murphy, from different states. But this will be the first ever vote that we are gonna see in the history of the United States to directly block any type of arms transfer to Israel specifically. This is a $20 billion package that sends bombs that were used to kill, take your old Henry Job, weapon kits that are used to, for example, commit bombing such schools, mosques, and other civilian infrastructure, and planes that are being used to conduct lethal airstrikes against communities in Gaza. Just a few days ago, Secretary of State Blinken and Secretary of Defense Austin sent a letter to the internal government urging that if they do not send humanitarian aid into Gaza at a higher rate, that the US will be considering putting bombs or putting a hold on the blockage of bombs and other weapons to Israel specifically. Now, we know that the administration has dragged its feet specifically waiting for election day to come up to even take action. But this is a rare opportunity for us as a movement, as an organization, NASA collective of organizers, to really push for specifically blocking weapons in Israel. If you could see specifically on the next slide that, you know, we have an opportunity, not just to block weapons that are being used now, but weapons that will be used eventually in the years to come to commit more mass atrocities against Palestinians in Gaza and to commit more unspeakable horrors against the Palestinian people. So for us, USCPR and others were, you know, not just connecting this to federal issues, but understanding that the groundswell of pressure on the local level is being felt on the federal level as well. But your organizing efforts are much more connected than we think. And that's why that we need to understand that, actually, hopefully, it's also important to thinking on the federal level. Actually, you could see here as well, Senator Sanders is the lead sponsor of each GRD. A GRD is a important congressional vehicle that can be used to block an executive branch sale from happening. There have been attempted GRDs in the past, but this is the only GRD solely focused on Israel. And again, this is the first ever vote that would happen in US history to block any type of weapons transfer to Israel that was authored by the Department. So I hope that you all take this information, and I hope that you all, if you send it to your local organizing. If you have any questions, please let us know, or please listen or left hand and a call tool, and we're happy to help. But again, the GRD is a very unique moment. It's a very rare moment, and we should be pushing as hard as possible. Both are expected to happen in mid-November. But again, we should be working every day between now and mid-November to ensure that our voice is heard on the local state and federal level. And again, ensuring that your member hears from you directly. So please take this information on GRDs, connect it to your local organizing, whether it's a target on a weapon manufacturer, whether it's an elected official, or whether it's a community institution that benefits from the genocide in Gaza. So again, these are our call tools, our central organization, USCPR action. But still, please consider connecting with your advocacy and understanding that, you know, while we are at a critical moment, that we need to ensure that this moment does not happen again, and that GRD allows us to withhold these resources from being used to commit another genocide in Gaza hopefully in the years to come. So please take this with you, and I'll pass it back over to our team. Thank you.
Thank you, Mohammed. Just to reiterate that, please share these links with your networks, with your organizations. And again, really try to push this throughout mid-November, throughout the rest of this month into mid-November. And before we pass it over to our speakers, just really quickly to the next slide. Yeah, we will send up, we will send out a roundup of like the resources and materials from this call. But if you're gonna go to the next slide, when we're thinking about our city local campaigns, we just wanna flag these three targets as citywide targets that, in addition to our elected representatives and, you know, what we're pushing on that angle, like three targets that the movement more broadly is, are orienting around. So we have Chevron, which has been the main international actor extracting fossil gas claimed by Israel in the eastern Mediterranean since it acquired Noble Energy in 2020. And the BDS movement is calling on people to engage in consumer boycotts of Chevron, Texaco, and Caltech's gas. We have Maersk, which is the logistics and shipping company that is shipping weapons components and weapons that are being used in this genocide. And the PYM is leading on this campaign, encouraging people to take up this target, to get Maersk to stop transporting arms and arms components and cut the contracts that enable it to. And this is a target that the Palestinian General Federation of Trade Unions, the PGFTU, in Gaza has encouraged people to take up. And we have Israel bonds, the campaign to end the purchase and investment in Israel bonds on an institutional, city, and state level. So just wanted to have, flag these. We will be having more webinars to deep dive more into these targets. But again, it's important in this moment, not just to continue to strengthen our organizations as vehicles to push campaigns, but also coordinate around clear targets across our movement to get maximum impact. So, okay, with that, I'm going to introduce our speakers. Nish, who is a founding member of Houston for Palestinian Liberation and has been organizing since high school, who's now really focused on taking on divestment in the South. As a first-generation immigrant, she is deeply passionate about racial equality, liberation work, climate justice, and reproductive justice. And she's coming to us again from Houston. And we have Noel, who's a Palestinian organizer based in Cleveland, Ohio. She's a member of the Palestinian Youth Movement, an organizer with the Cleveland Palestine Advocacy Community, and a board member for the Interreligious Task Force on Central America. And whilst her work focuses on Palestinian liberation, she believes in bridging the intersectionality of joint struggles with other minority groups with the recognition that we are all fighting the same systems of oppression and that none of us are free until we're all free. So let's give a welcome to our speakers, who are gonna be going through their campaigns as case studies for us all to learn from. So just wanna start maybe with Nish, if you can start really briefly, just give us like a quick overview of your current campaign and what its goals are, and then we'll get into the question.
Yeah, absolutely. I am so grateful to be in this space with y'all this evening. Thank you for holding the space for us. I wanted to share briefly on some of the things that we're working on in Houston. As a lot of folks know, this South is famous for pioneering anti-BDS legislation, making divestment incredibly difficult for us. So what we're hoping to do in Houston is to approach divestment in a unique manner that takes institutions of oppression and uses their tools against them. This looks like using things like ballot initiatives or like re-inspecting the investment committee structure in Houston and more broadly in the South to divest from death and simultaneously reinvest into our communities. So some things that I'll be sharing on are how to engage at a local level, how to use a lot of these institutions against us. Those look like Public Information Acts, city funding contracts, and then what the pivot looks like and where the appropriate time to take a pivot is, and then to frame it to ensure that we're seeing the strength within it. And those are some of the things that I'll be covering.
Amazing. Noel, can you introduce your campaign really briefly as well?
Yes. Thank you again, everyone, for being here. Really excited to get to talk about what we're doing in Cleveland. The Cleveland Palestine Advocacy Community, which is a coalition of multiple wonderful grassroots organizations, have come together to push for divestment at the county level. Cuyahoga County, which covers the northeastern region of Ohio, holds a $16 million portfolio in Israel bonds, which is the highest of any county in Ohio. And as many probably know, Ohio has one of the largest Israel bond holds in the nation. And so for the past six months, we have been mobilizing at county council, demanding binding legislation and policy commitments to stop the reinvestment into Israel bonds and the misuse of our tax dollars with a very simple campaign message of no new bonds. Invest in Cuyahoga County, not genocide.
Wow, that was so concise, guys. Thank you. So my first question for you is, for both of you, maybe we can start with Noel on this one, is when a city government is immovable, what alternative strategies do you think are the most effective in shifting the campaign focus or gaining leverage? And we know this is something that a lot of coalitions we've been speaking to are getting stuck with. So and when you all make that assessment, what other pressure points did you decide to target or to push for divestment? And how did you do that? So Noel, do you wanna take this one first?
Yeah. So our work actually began at the city level, not at the county level. Right after October 7th, we began mobilizing at the city level for a ceasefire resolution. And for seventeen weeks, we mobilized hundreds from the community to come out to pressure council to pass this resolution. And during this time, we were able to build trust in the community through coalition building, through partnership building, and relationship building. And that ultimately led us to get the ceasefire resolution and then move up to the county level, which for us was the natural progression towards divestment. And from these lessons that we learned at the city level and at the county level, knowing your locale is one of the biggest things that we have learned. For the first couple of weeks in both fields, we spent a lot of time learning the legal landscape of the area. So for Ohio specifically, we have an anti-BDS law, and so navigating what that would look like when it comes to divestment. Council member power mapping, so figuring out the understanding, the power balance in both the city and the county level, who makes the decisions and finding our correct target to focus on. Civil city power mapping, so learning about the opposition. When we had campaigned at city council, we didn't have as much outer opposition as county level, which covers a more wider base of people. And so while we were able to reach more people, we have more pushback. And so navigating that. And then also through the use of public records requests and understanding who our target is, that is gonna be the biggest factor for, I believe, many locales in deciding what tactics to use. For both city and county, we've used a diversity of tactics, speaking to council members, finding who our allies are, and then also finding out who makes the decisions and what avenues we could take for that as well. So like pushing for a charter amendment, whether it's pressuring council to pass their own resolution to pressure the county executive, or ultimately just gathering more base through the masses by popularizing this campaign and getting people to understand what Israel bonds are. It's a very foreign concept to many people. People do not understand where their tax dollars are being used. And it's a pretty simple message to be able to get people on board and understanding that our tax dollars should be used in the county where we are living and not sent to fund genocide.
Thank you so much, Noel. I'll pass it to you, Nish, for the same question around like when a city government is immovable. How do you determine alternative pressure points?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think a few things that are really important to recognize. And like Noel said, the concept of investing in Israeli bonds is on its face really detracting from the way local society works, right? And so explaining and exploring that to your community. And I think taking a step back, it's really important for us to recognize how we establish what an Israeli bond is and if your own city is invested in them. So when we look at investments, we can either Public Information Act, your local government for their investment portfolio, if it's not readily accessible, or a lot of them will have it readily accessible. Oftentimes, you'll have to work with a lawyer, a member of your community that's done this work before. But it's really simple to pull out that information and then kind of line it up with where the discrepancies are. So when the government itself is not recognizing or registering that investing in genocide is immoral, the best way to take it is then to your community and say, hey, do you feel safe when there's more police? Do you feel safe when the government is not addressing this or that need? Do you feel like city tax dollars are being invested in the best way? Does your child have the education that they want? Are there potholes? And there's a lot of ways to engage in our community. There's a lot of ways to engage to kind of explain the bedrock of how our tax dollars invest in a city but not in its people. And with the city government itself, a big thing that we've done in Houston is that we have been one really adept at navigating the intersections between city government itself. So the mayor of Houston doesn't have a great relationship with the city council members. That's a great opportunity to explore and kind of use that wedge against itself. And the other element that's been really effective for us is we view something called a ballot proposition, which essentially says you can amend your city's constitution. So that's actually relocating the power away from your city council or from your local government back into the hands of the people. And we can chat a little bit more about that towards the tail end, but really ensuring that we use the opportunities available to us. I would look up if your city allows for a ballot initiative, if your city allows for amendments to the constitution. And I would go back to working within the community and acknowledging the amount that is going into the state of Israel. And then just because I've seen this question crop up a few times, USCPR has a really great tool on their website to see how much your city invests in genocide, and then you can also Information Act it.
Thank you both so much. I really think it's a good point on like kind of doing the research and publicizing what you all find in a really clear and accessible way and using that to agitate people around the campaigns and where the, and where the city is actually invested in. Then my next question for y'all is, in, when we think about targets, like in cases where divestment was not immediately achievable, how have you used any intermediate steps to push towards the ultimate goal? And can you guys talk more a little bit? I know you've referenced this already, but when you did pivot your campaigns, how did you pivot? If you all can speak to that a little bit more, and what was the main message when you did that, when you made that pivot? Like, how did you all shift in messaging and in strategy? And maybe we can start with Nish for this one and go to Noel.
Yeah, sounds great. And so a few things about the pivot. I think it's really difficult for us to step back from something that a lot of us want, which looks like divestment, because financially impacting Zionist entities is one of the most powerful tools we have. And I think grounding yourself in the fact that it was not your inability to organize, but rather an institution's decision to occupy and oppress you. And I think that's really important to communicate to the locale that you're working in. And oftentimes, when folks testify before city council, they get a sense of the isolation, the neglect, and the disconnect between elected office and the people that they serve. So I think using those testimonies as an opportunity is always really welcome. In Houston, we like to point out when the mayor doesn't attend our testimony, when council members roll their eyes. And we really like to name those things as a way of acknowledging that we cannot work in this space because it is now a waste of capacity or it is a waste of resources, and we're moving in a different direction. So I think that pivot has to be one that is grounded in the belief that you were on the right side of history because fundamentally, the occupation that you're fighting against is one that has the complicity of the US government. And I think there is a lot of nuance to explore within that. The pivot itself, though, is really important to be framed internally and externally. Coalition partners and the folks that you're working with, as well as the folks that are watching what you're doing, need to understand what direction you're shifting in. For us in Houston, that looked like stepping away from asking for a ceasefire resolution because it had been seven months of asking and of being ignored versus moving into asking for an amendment to our financial policy. And that was advertised really well internally and externally. And then Noel, do you wanna answer the question on the pivot? And then we can come back to the second piece of the question?
Yeah, sure. So pivot for us, kind of first going from like the city to the county level after our seventeen-week campaign and we got the ceasefire resolution. We had no clear avenue as far as how to continue with city. And so naturally, the next step was divestment at the county level. After we did public records requests, we found out how much the county was investing, and were then able to have more of a clear target to bring the community in. And so we started with an informational post, just a very basic social media post of what are Israel bonds? Where are they being invested? How are they being used? And where could they be used? And kind of getting this idea out to people to start imagining what they would do if the money was spent here, like where it should be expended. And so again, as Nish said, being like just very clear with the messaging is super important, especially when it comes to topics like Israel bonds that are hard for people to talk about and a little more of a hard concept to grasp. I would also say like for us, this shift now at county as we're determining who is becoming the more immediate target or who we need to apply pressure to, we are in this kind of shift of tactics where we are recognizing that the same mobilization tactics that we're using at city are maybe not as effective here or that we need a shift. And so kind of navigating now how to continue pressuring the county executive, who is the target, while also still including the community and keeping them engaged.
No, I think that's a really great point. I think the best question you wanna ask yourself when you talk about who to target in local government or across the board in your campaign is who is the most at stake? There have been a lot of situations previously where there have been targets that are a little bit more effective for us to take on, but they don't have anything at stake. And when I say at stake, I mean, they don't have an election coming up. They don't have a donor pool that gets potentially compromised. They don't work within community. So acknowledging who has the most at the table, the council members that had the highest Palestinian and Muslim diasporas were the first to cave, asking for a ceasefire resolution, because we made it abundantly clear. One of my favorite tools in terms of targeting these politicians is you don't have to engage with them in any way. You actually just have to go and ruin all of their PR opportunities. So bring a Gaffi and bring a flag to every community engagement event they have and be in every photo. You've ruined all the goodwill they could have potentially created with the community, and they can't name it because you didn't do a single thing against them. So they really offer you a lot of opportunities to sabotage their relationships with the community because they're not ones that are made well intentionally.
Thank you, guys. So I know that like with city council, you know, campaigns, keeping momentum is a really important part of these campaigns. How are, how are you all able, like, I don't know, while you were saying like you all spent like seventeen weeks back to back, you were going to the city councils? Like, how did you build? Why is building a mass base really important to keep up the pressure? And how were you guys able to keep the momentum? And if the ultimate goal, which is the divestment resolution, for example, or whatever resolution you're pushing for, if that's not one, how else can you measure other kinds of wins, like mobilization wins or partial political wins? Like moving some decision makers or isolating Zionism or building a mass base? How did you guys think about like these different types of wins along the way to reaching the ultimate goal? And maybe Noel will start with you this time.
Yeah, so a couple of points with that. When we were doing our seventeen-week-long campaign at city council, I think one of the big factors in keeping people engaged was the consistency of it. We were there every Monday in the evening to give public comment, to be present at the meeting. And we tried to apply different tactics and ways to engage the crowd with us as well. So encouraging them to give public comment, using demonstrations as a way to disrupt meetings. So can't even underestimate people power and using the masses as just a presence as a force to be reckoned with. And we also did other ways to engage the base while they were there. We would have educational teach-ins. We would spend time going around and talking and base building with people. We had iftars there during Ramadan as a way to encourage people to still come out. And so I think through these like seventeen weeks, we were able to build trust with the community and get little wins along the way. Anytime we were able to shut down a meeting, it kind of reignited everyone's energy and to be able to come back the next week. And then I think ultimately getting this win with the ceasefire resolution was a good pivot for us to be able to get into county and demonstrate that we are able to get wins. And now we want to move to something even more tangible and material with divestment. I'd also say that I think it has allowed us to be able to be more creative in our ways for divestment as well. We now think of ways for people to do noise demonstrations, doing house calls with the executives showing up at state of the county. And so being able to apply pressure in multiple ways, I think, gives people multiple avenues to be able to plug in in a way that they feel comfortable or that they feel applies enough pressure.
Thanks, Noel. Nish, I'll pass it to you for the same question.
Yeah, absolutely agree. And I think a few avenues that we've found really successful, my background is actually one of them, right? So on the days that we're not providing a lot of testimony, we have folks out in the audience that are disrupting the live stream with a series of banners, posters, or signs. We did a people's resolution one week where we essentially just started reading out our own resolution for what we think the city of Houston should pass, and then walked out. We'll often come in with Bradley text gloves and just keep our hands up as people are speaking. So there's a lot of opportunities within city council itself for disruption as well as base building. And I think it's a really unique opportunity. What we've noticed is that folks that tend to come for other social justice What we've noticed is that folks that tend to come for other social justice causes, for example, Houston has a really big problem of pollution. They tend to end their speeches now with an also free Palestine or stop bombing the olive trees in Palestine, right? So there's a lot of these opportunities for a unique intersectionality. And Houston also has a massive houseless problem and the mayor has been very hostile to the houseless community. And so those are folks that often come and testify. And so not only does it give you opportunities to expand your base, it also gives you tangible ways to contribute to your own city. And I think that makes it a lot more effective for us to work in coalition if you're also simultaneously using those opportunities to feed people. And other things that we do is having disruptive schedules, but internally kept. And we have a very large city council and outside there's like a pool and they call it the reflection pool. And so we've covered it in like bloodied baby clothes before. We've called the press out before. We've called press conferences at the same time as city council. So it's just about assessing your community's capacity and seeing what they want to do. For us, the end goal and strategy of disrupting city council is if you're refusing to divest, then we're refusing to give you your peace, right? Like really bringing home that no justice, no peace. But those are opportunities that I think have really provided momentum for the community. And they've also emboldened members of the community that might be a little bit more on the side of let's work with these people. And let's have conversations, let's work within. And when they see that inability to extend an olive branch from the other side, it really gives them the confidence and the courage to escalate.
Thank you, guys. So my next question is actually about like kind of more of like the empowerment of your base. And what are some key skills that you actually suggest that people who may not currently be involved in an organization or maybe are new to organizing? What are the skills that you would encourage them to develop in order to best support either your campaigns or these types of campaigns on a city or county wide level? And let's pass it to Nish.
I think this is such a good question. One, I think a lot of people have skill sets that they don't realize are incredibly helpful to the movement to like come in and message local organizations and say like, hey, I'm really good at social media. I'm really good at banner printing. I'm really good at this, that and the other. And I guarantee you the people around you will use those skills and incorporate them. Additionally, I think just having research capability and an awareness of what your city is investing in and how you can tangibly contribute to making that more difficult for them. And so what that looks like for me is, for example, if the city of Texas or the state of Texas gets eighty-five public information requests at once, that backlogs their servers, right? If there's a lot of public testimony or if the mayor or city council members are receiving constant phone calls and constant emails, it makes it harder for them to do their job and it gives them an awareness that their constituency is angry with them. So if you're not there in person or if you're new to organizing, I think reaching out to an organization is really helpful, but also kind of doing some of that outreach on your own and making it clear that this is not a siloed action from a few people in your county. It can happen from anywhere. And the kind of problematic part is that you can email council members from anywhere. So I can email a council member in Cleveland from Houston and they'll never know that I'm not from their city, right? So you can also tap into national campaigns in that way and make sure that you're supporting them. Apart from that, I really think it's a matter of being involved in your local community and being able to step up and using those skill sets effectively. We have a lot of lawyers who cannot come to actions because they are lawyers, but they can help us by providing legal backbone and providing that research. So I just think it's a matter of identifying and then working with the people around you.
Yeah, I really agree. Noel?
Yeah, I definitely echo everything Nish is saying. There is a place for everybody in the movement. And really, the first step is just showing up and doing. I think that's a lot of where we as organizers have learned to get to where we are now is by trial and error, it's by getting out and by practicing. And so I think just by showing up at events that interest you, talking to the organizers there is a great way to be plugged in. And from there, like Nish said, using any skill set that you have, there is a place for everybody. I would also say that relationship building is also super, super important and cannot be underestimated, at least for our movement, especially for our movement here in Cleveland. The relationships that we have amongst each other as organizers and what we've built out in the community is what has sustained us for as long as we have and what's going to keep us sustained for the long haul. And so we and CPAC are actually going through a whole structural change right now where we're trying to be thoughtful about transparency and flexibility, but also creating a place for accountability through working pods where people are able to work in specific areas that interest them, whether it's through canvassing, through social media, through demonstrations. And so a very like niche, specific place to plug in and not feel so overwhelmed by the work. Because I think a lot of people also tend to get very overwhelmed by trying to get to total liberation and in keeping in mind of this kind of long haul work, being able to focus in on things that you are good at and using the skills that you have, while also working towards a broader goal will be very helpful.
This is really good, Noel, about like how I think about how to share a long-term campaign. My last question to you guys before we go to, I think we'll have some time, I think it's maybe ten minutes, but it's about a problem that we see in several different coalitions. So we know that coalitions function as a real challenge and sometimes they can be fall apart, not just because politicians.
I'm sorry, your audio quality is a little bit messy. Would you mind either sharing it in the chat or repeating it?
Yeah, can y'all hear me?
This is a lot.
Okay, I think it was my AirPods. Okay, so I was asking about coalition challenges as a issue that we've seen come up across so many groups that have reached out to us for support and how a lot of the time we see the main challenges actually come from inside of the coalitions. You know, just as much as we see from like external pressure and opposition. We've seen coalition partners undermine each other or, you know, burn each other out through these different types of challenges that we've seen. So how in your experience have you guys been able to build with organizations that might not fully align on tactics? And what recommendations might you have for anyone who does struggle with coalition challenges right now? And I'll type it in the chat in case you didn't hear. Nish, can we start with you?
Yes. So I think two things that are really important to consider in coalition is, and I, there's a quote by the Black Panthers that I don't remember currently, but it is really grounded all my coalition work up until this point. And it's that you don't need to be in coalition forever. In fact, you should not be. And so this recognition that your organizations oftentimes do not have the same targets, do not have the same strategies and do not have the same capacity. And they're working together for a short period of time. Whether that period of time looks like a weekend for an event or months long for something like divestment, it's really crucial to recognize that these are not the people that you will be working with forever, but you have a joint goal and a joint mission and you have to accomplish it. And I think that joint goal and joint mission is really important to establish before you move into the coalition. So in Houston, that joint goal is divestment. What we do once we accomplish divestment is really go back into our various organizations and do the organizing and the work in our own silos. And so it's, I understand that oftentimes coalition is people who have different strategies, people who don't communicate well with each other. And I think these are regular organizing problems that a lot of us face and come into. And communication is a good solution to them. We're really that long-term recognition that you don't have to work in the same ways. But in this moment, there are bombs dropping and they're dropping with both the blessing and the support of the Western empire. And we're in the belly of the beast. And so what we owe the people that are being occupied as a result of the country we are currently in is to work as effectively as possible to resolving that conflict so that it is not outsourcing the fact that we are working towards divestment, towards collective liberation, towards this, that and the other. And the other thing I think is really important going into coalition is defining your terms yourself and then sticking to those definitions, right? So like if your infrastructure is working pods and stick with working pods, if your definitions are collective liberations with no political engagement, then remain within that, right? Oftentimes, I think we just have different working definitions. And that's what makes it incredibly difficult to come together in coalition because those are things that not can't really allow the existence of one another. And what I mean by that is autonomous groups play a very big part in the movement. I would argue as large of a part as organizational movement building. So you don't have to constantly be working within one another spaces or laying the groundwork for each other's spaces. And last piece, and I think it's always really difficult, but swallow ego and swallow credibility. It is truly not about us. Not only are we not the front of the war, we are the least important front of the war, right? Like this is led by the people of Gaza, by the people of Lebanon, by the people that valiantly stand up every day and stand in resilience against the Zionist entity. We are following their lead. And so credit should really be the lowest priority on the list. Ego should be the lowest priority on the list. It's about ensuring that we can create sustainable movement building that will allow us to carry this into the next decade and ensure that there's never anything that exists like this again. Noel?
Yeah, absolutely. All of that, one hundred percent. For us in CPAC, as we're moving into this kind of newer, more formalized structure, we've come up with points of unity. So having a shared anti-Zionist definition that we all share and also having coalitional partners or organizations have publicly stated support for Palestinian liberation and sovereignty. So coming with this like first of a grounding of understanding of where we're coming from to ultimately push us towards our goals. And I think, as Nisha said, each locale comes with many conversations of needing to use a diversity of tactics. There are people who are pushing for more escalation, people who are pushing for more diplomacy. And there's always a place in the middle that you can find. And what we've found is that we have groups of people who work better in each area. And so if we come together with these unity points or these shared goals, using these diversity of tactics has been our best way to come to agreements when there is disagreements as far as like what tactics to use or how we are moving towards a shared goal. I would also say that for us, there's a really big importance in these building relationships and trust among our comrades. So we have meetings in person where we're able to come together and talk out ideas, everyone's opinion is heard. And then we are able to come to more of a consensus. And not everyone's idea wins each time, but it's through these open conversations and discussions and keeping a transparency in the decisions that we're making that makes everyone feel belonging and a sense of choice in the decisions that are being made. I think I would also just say as well that, as Nish said, you don't have to work directly with everybody and every organization. There are going to be some organizations that have different goals, whether they also agree and want to work for Palestine, have their own agendas as well. And so it's just being thoughtful in who you're deciding to work with and coming with an understanding and a grounding of that most people are coming from a good place and moving from there before you are hasty to cast off any organization or individual that you don't want to work with. And I think for us in Cleveland, what has been super special to me is the coalition that we've built and the group of people that we have built with us and have provided a space for this kind of structure to be formed without it being overbearing.
Thank you both so much for responding to that. I think it's really helpful for a lot of the people who are currently working inside of coalitions. Can y'all hear me all? Okay, we'll just maybe take two questions from the group before we close out. So we have a question here. I think this will be a good chance, actually, Nish, if you can, if we can screen share Nish's graphic to respond to this question. So where is it? The question is, how should we shift strategy towards divestment campaigns for city councils that are unwilling to pass a ceasefire resolution? I don't know, Leah, if we can screen share real quick, but Nish, I want to see if you can actually go over this graphic a little bit because I think that kind of responds to some of the questions in the.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. And I know a lot of folks in the chat have also posed the question of anti-BDS legislation. Noel and I both live in places where there's anti-BDS legislation, so something that we work with intimately. And we can expand on this a little bit more, but essentially if you have a city council that is open to a ceasefire resolution, your next step should always be pushing for divestment. If you don't know what your city is invested in, you can do one of two things. Check their website and check their portfolios. They'll have something called city investments. It's oftentimes as simple as Googling Houston city investments. And for ours, it'll come up. If it's not publicly available, you look up, does my city or state have a public information act? And then you can walk through the steps of that portfolio and public information act what you're invested in. Oftentimes, your city will give you a very little amount of information because they don't want to share it with you. You can just keep requesting it. In many states, it's illegal for them to exceed ten days. And so that also allows you to threaten legal action. But if you have an amenable city council, you push for divestment and then you push for something called a ballot initiative, which is essentially an amendment to your city constitution or to your state charter. Successful ballot initiatives in the past have looked like Minneapolis after the George Floyd uprisings abolished the city's need for a police department and was able to reallocate that funding. Colorado was able to pass ballot initiatives for housing access. If you have a hostile city council, which is what a lot of us have, your first act should be a public information act to see if there are bonds in Israel. If there are bonds in Israel, we can push towards divestment through that ballot initiative, which essentially says that you propose an initiative and you submit it to your state. If you're in Texas, you would submit it to the Texas Attorney General. And then come November, when the next election comes, the people of your city will be voting on it. And so a lot of you, if you voted before, you've seen ballot initiatives on your vote. And they're used for things like increasing pay for public sanitation workers, for example. And so you've seen a ballot initiative most likely before. If you get a certain amount of the vote, the ballot initiative goes into effect. If you have anti-BDS legislation in your state, it is incredibly crucial that you don't use the term divestment because that can automatically trigger a lawsuit. In Houston and in Cleveland, they use the language of reinvest in, so reinvest in your city. There's other ways for you to engage with that, but using the terms boycott, divestor sanction will trigger that automatic lawsuit. Ultimately, you can also identify when your city next has their investment hearing. Houston has ours in November and that's information that has to be publicly accessible. They also have to tell you who's on that committee. So an investment committee essentially looks at the city's budget and says, here's how we're going to invest it. This is what we're proposing. And then they send it to the mayor and the city council. If you find out early enough, you can target the members of the investment committee themselves. You can do mass emails, mass phone calls, protest outside their home, set up your own portfolio of investments that reinvest in your city and not in death and send it to them. If it goes to the mayor and to the city council, then you can then hold rallies there. You can pack the city hall there. You can reach out to local media. That's a brief overview on what the city council divestment chart looks like. And then if there are other questions, folks are welcome to drop them in the chat or we can engage with them here, whatever is best for you, Leah and Celine.
Yeah, I think we'll, again, we have like a series of webinars coming up and we have some strategy groups that will share with you all how to plug into after this. But Noel, do you want to add anything about this question or to this question around how we should shift strategy towards divestment?
I think I would just reiterate being conscious of the language that you are using, specifically when it comes to ballot initiatives or talking to the general public as well. We are having talks in the county level or at our locale about doing a charter amendment, which would need to garner forty thousand signatures, among other things and other language, legal language that we have to battle through. And so even if we decide to go through this and it ultimately like doesn't win, I think using this as an opportunity to base build and to publicize divestment to the broader community is equally as important as receiving. Obviously, the tangible win is the most important, but equally as important is building a base and getting the people power. And it provides just an avenue of pressure, another avenue of pressure against the target. That's why I think I'm highlighting so much about this diversity of tactics is being able to not only focus on disruptions or escalations, but then also balancing the navigating the local government field as well. And that takes like a whole coalition working together to be able to achieve that.
Thanks, Noel. We're going to do one last question. I know y'all are responding to questions in the chat too. The last question I'll ask, and either of you can respond to this, is how do we counter mass email and phone campaigns from the opposition when they're calling on non constituents for these counter campaigns? Do either of you want to respond to that real quick? Resources?
I would say you can also call on non constituents, right? Like there are very large movements. You can work with organizations like USC PR or coalitions in other cities and ask them to email and call as well. One thing that really helps offload the labor and encourage people to reach out is if you set up a few scripts ahead of time, a lot of people are not comfortable reaching out to elected officials. And so encouraging them to set up burner emails and then giving them talking points ahead of time is helpful.
Yeah, and I would just add, not only like engaging that base, but also calling it out for what it is. We've called out to council members about the plethora of emails that they've gotten and highlighted to them, you know, that many of them are fake or not even have real names or numbers. So being able to do like a public records request to identify where these like communications are coming from and then being able to publicly call it out as well. So being able to do like a public records request to identify where these like communications are coming from and then being able to publicly call it out as well.
Also, I do think it's important to recognize the point that we're at in the American public, like arena is one that's completely uncharted territory for a lot of Zionist elected officials. So the majority of them have never been engaged with on the question about Palestine for careers that could be up to sixty to eighty years. So even if it is a drop in the bucket in comparison to the opposition, it's a record making drop in the bucket. And the last thing I would say is if you can do an op ed or if you know someone in the community who's comfortable going up with their name and doing an op ed, it gives you a new way to engage with the media.
Agreed. I think media is a really important part. Okay, we have five minutes left. Just want to say thank you both so much for speaking about your campaigns. Noel, for talking about how y'all have also built a mass movement in Cleveland through your campaign and use the diversity of tactics. Nish, I think it's been really helpful to see how you guys were able to pivot and deal with a hostile city council and still be able to push and build a strong coalition. So thank you all again for joining us, Nish and Noel. And then maybe we can screen share just the final, in the final few minutes. I just want to go over a couple of resources for you guys. If you want to have more discussions with our fellows, Nish and Noel, and then others who are working on city level campaigns, we do have strategy groups. One focused on city council, one focused on corporate pressure. We even launched like a beginning initial space for K-12 organizing. So if you want to sign up for like USCPR strategy support, skills building trainings, you can apply to the grassroots action network. And here's the information and the link for you all to apply for that. So just want to take like a second if you want to copy the link and sign up. This is where, again, you can sign up for USCPR strategy, group meetings, spaces and skills building trainings. So we'll drop the link in the chat. But we also do have council organizing toolkit. So the case studies that Noel and Nish shared are also somewhat reflected in here. And we've been reflecting and incorporating case studies from different campaigns, learn lessons. So what we have in the city council toolkit right now that we've recently updated includes, you know, key strategy questions that you should ask yourself before you start a citywide campaign. A little bit of framing on what to think about before you launch a divestment campaign and how to organize for one. We have examples of case studies from local divestment campaigns that have one a step-by-step, like how do you organize for a resolution? We have additional types of city council resolutions. If you're interested in thinking about alternative ways to pressure your city or institution to divest. And we have also like a compilation of like different challenges that we've heard from different coalitions and how these groups have been able to respond to and navigate those challenges. We have talking points, sample resolutions. So encourage you to check out the city council organizing toolkit, if that's what you're working on right now. And then our next resource is the Stop Because of Genocide Toolkit, which includes just a bunch of information that gets updated regularly for we pasting, firing, canvassing, phone banks, running your own local phone bank, upcoming actions, messaging that you can use for your actions. That's all included here in this toolkit. And I'm rushing to these, but we're almost at time. And the final resource is a newly launched resource called Drop the ADL from Schools. So I know, I'm sure a lot of you have heard about the Drop the ADL campaign. It was launched in twenty twenty to encourage progressive organizations to drop their partnerships and like contracts, relationships to the ADL. This is a resource that's specific to schools. So if you work in schools, if you're in K-12 organizing, if you're a teacher, you're a student and you want to organize to get the ADL out of your schools, including on college campuses, you can use this resource. And we just go to droptheadlfromschools.org and we also have a letter to educators here to encourage them to do the same. So again, thank you all for joining. Thanks, Nish and Noel for speaking to us about your campaigns. It was really useful to hear about. Basically, we asked you all the questions that we've heard people have been getting stuck with over the past several months. So it was really helpful to hear from you all how you navigated that. And we hope you all use the resources we shared and we'll see you at the next one, which is going to be focused on pressuring corporations to divest. So we'll hear more about Maersk, Chevron at those, at the upcoming webinars. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, everyone.